Sorry about that. We call this board meeting of the Nelson County Board of Education to order on February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four at five thirty P. M. Please join us in the board. Please join us as we lead you guys in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think the first item on the agenda is student and staff celebrations with Superintendent Bradley.
So each month we take time to celebrate students and staff from across the district with the Impossible Top Ten. I will invite our Director of Human Resources, Ms. Kim Hogan, up to celebrate some of the staff members from the month of January that we are highlighting for our Pride Awards.
I wanted to recognize some of our leaders from across the district who were celebrated in the month of January for living out our pride values. For Putting People First Award, it was Vanessa Clark of Thomas Nelson over here to my left. For the Reimagined Possibilities. The Reimagined Possibilities Award was given to Jonah Carter of Nelson County High School. The Innovate and Grow Award was given to Lorette Nusso. She's with our Diverse Learning Team. Tracy Wethington of Cox's Creek received the Dedicated to Community Award. And Hallie Runner of Foster Heights received the Energize the World Award. Thank you all for helping me celebrate these amazing leaders.
Thank you, Kim.
I think next we have the Pride Awards.
Oh, I still do. I go through the top ten. So save the date, March eighth, we have the Pride Games. This year, we're shift making a shift from basketball due to injuries to volleyball, which will probably just get different injuries. So the community is invited out to the March eighth Pride Games. It'll be this year. It'll be at Thomas Nelson High School. This month, we also celebrated counselors, Family Resource Youth Service coordinators, and a number of other team members across the district. With the top ten for February, we had a record number of students in the Nelson County Schools, six hundred and six Nelson County students enroll in a dual credit course for the spring semester of two thousand and twenty-four. Twenty-plus teachers from Boston, New Haven, and Oak Kentucky Home united for the first time ever to begin connecting for this middle school connected campus conversation that we've started over the past month. Bloomfield Elementary School and Cox's Creek Elementary School received forty thousand dollars each this month for a math grant that will allow teachers to continue to expand opportunities through illustrative math. Foster Heights held what is our first elementary United for Success Town Hall this month. Elementary students from across the district showed an average growth of sixteen percent on quarter-two tests in our community assessments. The aerospace and health science students participated in a career and technical education showcase with the Kentucky Board of Education members last week and the Kentucky Barn of Education. They were also featured in this month's edition of the Kentucky Teacher. Over sixty employers across Nelson County will be uniting with our high school students at Nelson County High and Thomas Nelson for mock interviews and operation preparation in just a couple of weeks. Middle school students in our four middle schools demonstrated growth in community assessments this quarter in every subject area. Fifty-plus students across the district participated in the State Beta Convention just a few weeks back. Some of those were virtual because of the snow out. And lastly, Nelson County High School and Thomas Nelson High School students engaged in the second school-wide writing experience of the year. These are just some of the Impossible Top Ten from February of two thousand and twenty-four.
All right, next on our agenda, we have the Thomas Nelson High School Student Showcase and Data Dashboard with Kurt Merrifield and Courtney Newton.
Somebody's gonna have to get their phone out. This is, this is a. This will be our first access denied in months in the board meeting. So each month, we work with schools to showcase some of the important work going on across the district. Mr. Merrifield right now is simply giving us access to this link on his phone and ready to rock and roll.
All right, now we're good. Well, we're excited to talk to you guys tonight, so we have our Thomas Nelson leadership team up here. They are going to talk to you guys about some priorities. Some are academic in nature and some are about some initiatives that they are doing to make sure that students are prepared for life outside of high school, beyond these walls. So their team is going to talk to you guys about priorities and the growth that has resulted from those priorities. So Mr. Merrifield's gonna kick it off.
Good evening. I'm gonna be brief. I will be handing it off to my awesome team here, but we wanted to just focus a little bit on our post-secondary readiness dashboard. We wanted to highlight some of the indicators that go into post-secondary readiness. As we know, students enter Thomas Nelson High School, it is a four-year future story journey from freshman year to senior year. Our goal is to ensure that once they graduate and walk across those that stage, they have the skills necessary to be contributing members of society and the skills to be successful in the workforce, in college and career, and anything that they're going to do to contribute to society, Nelson County, the state of Kentucky, and the greater state as well. So quickly, this is just a dashboard of overall transition readiness. It talks a little bit about our current class of two thousand and twenty-four. They are currently at about ninety-five percent transition-ready, so that means all of our seniors, ninety-five percent of them, are already meeting some transition readiness benchmark, whether that is an ACT academic benchmark, whether that is a benchmark through a dual credit course, or a benchmark through profession-based experiences. And it also highlights the work that's being done with our juniors, our sophomores, and even our freshman class. Over one in five freshmen are already earning or achieving a transition-ready or post-secondary-ready indicator. So Mr. Smith will be talking about some of those academic indicators today. Ms. Conley will be talking about some of the CTE programming indicators. And then Ms. Smith will be talking about some of the work we do locally to ensure that we know where each student is so we can identify their needs and make sure that they are cared for in a specific manner. So I'm gonna hand it off to Mr. Smith.
So when we think about some of the academic folk I for Thomas Nelson High School, I first want to shout out just our amazing leaders. They work their tail ends off every day to make sure we have rigorous and meaningful experiences in the classroom that really put academics at the forefront, obviously. So what you're gonna see on this dashboard, first of all, is showcasing the work of our design lab leaders or our PLC leaders. These are department heads, and we'll kind of go through each of these leaders and some kind of data indicator that either illustrates growth on KSA or ACT, interim assessments, community assessments, which are common assessments. All of the areas that we think gives a wide array of how students are doing academically and how our leaders are contributing to that. So first up, we have right here, this is Ms. Libby Hatfield. She's our PLC lead for our history team or social studies. So a big data point to kind of celebrate with the history team, our students grow on an average of fourteen percent from quarter one to quarter two community assessments in social studies. That's ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade students. So those community assessments are common assessments, and really that work started in the summer with our leadership pathways under the guidance of Ms. Newton, where, you know, teachers from across the district came and worked on vertical alignment, curriculum building, community assessments are common assessment buildings. So a lot of work that started in the summer is starting to come to life here in our schools. For science, we have Ms. Haley Boggs. She's our science lead. And our science team has done a great job focusing on formative assessments of students to see what they are learning in real time. Specifically for this indicator, we are talking about something that's found in our teaching standards for science. And that is the ability for students to craft an effective claim or hypothesis. And we know with scientific method, kids have to be able to do that. So we've seen that seventy-three percent of science students can do that, craft an effective claim or hypothesis addressing a scientific question. For math, we have Ms. Laura Cornish here. She's been a leader for, she's gonna get on me, over thirty years she's been teaching. She's our PLC lead for the math department. And the class of two thousand and twenty-five, which are our juniors, they have grown four point six percent from the fall twenty-two ACT they took as sophomores to the fall twenty-three interim assessment they took this year. So a big growth point there. Similarly, for English, Hunter McCarty is our English lead. A similar data point here, the class of two thousand and twenty-five grew thirty point five percent from the fall twenty-two ACT, again, these are this is the junior class, to the interim assessment in the fall. So those are just some of the pieces we wanted to highlight for what's going on academically in the classroom. In the bottom right corner, we're very proud of all the dual credit opportunities our kiddos are receiving. Just in semester one, so semester one completed about four or five weeks ago, just in semester one, our kiddos accrued over four hundred and sixty college credit hours in semester one. We also have a hundred and forty-one students enrolled in in-person, so in-person teachers here at Thomas Nelson teaching dual credit classes, so credits for college. Advanced placement, just a data point from last year, because those advanced placement courses have not ended so far this year. In two thousand and twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three, we had ninety-six plus college credit hours earned through AP classes. So those are just some data points we want to highlight about the work that's been going on. Again, I want to applaud our amazing leaders for all their hard work and our awesome students for all the work they're putting into their classes. I'm gonna hand over to our workforce leader, Ms. Conley.
Thank you, Sean. So when you think of career readiness specifically, most of you are probably familiar with profession-based experiences or PBE. And that's when our seniors go out into the workforce during their school day for learning outside of the building. However, there are other indicators other than PBE, and we're gonna highlight just a few of those tonight. Our, our students are showing up big. They're enthusiastic to not only be college-ready but career-ready as well. And as you see, one indicator is they can receive industry certifications or pass an end-of-program assessment. In less than two weeks, about two hundred and twenty-seven of our generals, that's mostly sophomores through seniors, they will be participating and taking assessments, industry certifications and EOPs, anywhere from the agriculture pathway to welding pathway. So we have several high-man pathways that they will be taking assessments in. They get to take these assessments because they have successfully completed at least two courses in a specific pathway. And these assessments and certifications are not something that the district creates or that we assess students on. This is something that the Kentucky Department of Education, Board of Education, has set standards on, and they are recognized in the industry. Students actually receive certification in Medicaid, and they can also, it's a direct entry to apprenticeships. And some students can actually skip or pass their first year of apprenticeship and move forward that way. So it's a great way for our generals to become career readiness. Another is our CTE, Career Technical Education Dual Credit Classes. So thirty percent of our seniors right now have either passed a CTE dual credit course or they are currently enrolled in a dual credit course. And when they successfully, successfully complete those, they are also considered career-ready. And then lastly, our profession-based experiences. And the Kentucky Department of Education in the school year of two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, they approved for work-based learning. If a student works three hundred hours or more over the course of a school year, that is also an indicator that they are career-ready. And it's not just about getting them out of the building, sending them to work. It's about creating those relationships with employers, networks with employers, because not every student has that opportunity or has that support at home or may not know, you know, how to make those connections. So we're truly uniting people, place, and purpose when they are doing this. Also, we, we as leaders, I know Holly Smith is one of our workforce leaders and senior team leaders. Sorry, let me take a breath. Talking too fast. We actually conduct four site visits each for every student in a profession-based experience, and almost eighty-four percent of our seniors are participating. So that means we do, gosh, I can't do the math. We have about a hundred and thirty students doing it, four visits each year. We sit down with the employer and the student. And based on feedback we've received from employers over the last several years, we created a contributor progression, which is like a rubric. And we have evaluations with the students. The employer provides that feedback immediately to the student as far as how they're growing as an initiator, advocator, empathizer in that PBE, in that workplace, and in our community. And those students actually reflect. Once per quarter, they have to do a written reflect, and based on the feedback they get from their employer, and they are learning and growing. And as you can see, based on what we have gathered just from quarter one to quarter two, there's been a twenty-nine percent growth for our seniors as independent contributors. And our goal is for all of them to be independently contributing to their workplace, their community, and their future stories. So, and that's just nine weeks, so we're super proud. I do want to highlight Carter Kennedy, this lower picture here. He's very humble. I tried to celebrate him during a class when I was visiting classes. He actually, he completed the Electrical Apprenticeship Certification. He took over four courses in electrical. He decided to pursue a PBE at Home City Ice. Well, I think he started that over the summer. Home City Ice offered to pay for his CDL. He is eighteen. He successfully received his CDL already, and that's about a six thousand dollar cost. And he is going to stay with Home City Ice at least for a few years after graduation, maybe longer. So he is a huge success story. He has a lot of opportunities ahead of him. Also, last but not least, Hannah Wolf. She's a senior as well. She probably, she encompasses all three of those indicators. She completed the Health Science Collaborate Pathway, passed the NOCKI. She started working at Cooper Trail Assisted Living at her junior year, and she just recently, over the last couple of weeks, transitioned to Norton Healthcare in Louisville. So she's able to, you know, start those twelve-hour shifts, shifts and get into the real world. She plans to stay there after she graduates as well, and she'll have tuition reimbursement when she does that. So we're super proud of our students. I gotta thank my workforce leader teams because I cannot do this without you. So thank you, guys. I'll pass it to Holly Smith.
Hello? So I know we threw a lot of numbers out to you all. If you've ever heard me speak before, I'm not a fan of numbers. But I know we threw a lot of numbers out to you all. So what I want to say about our data dashboard is that these numbers, they represent every student within our building. So it's not just a number. It's actually a student that those numbers represent. And every one of those students has their own individual journey and their own individual path that they're going down. So what this data does is it allows us to recognize these students' needs and be able to help identify these students so that we can make them successful in the academically, in our classrooms, as well as in the real world, right? Because that's why we want them to be successful, in the real world. So Kurt kind of touched base on every student, every day, and how we've been thinking about process over product, right? So in our culture building, I think our data plays a huge role in what we do and the way our culture lays out in our building. Our data helps us identify these kids. The way it does that is through, let's say, Care and Connects, right? A lot of other school systems are now developing models like ours. I think almost every school in the district, if not every school, runs a Care and Connect now. Am I correct on that?
Middle and high schools are doing some form of it, yeah.
Cox's Creek does as well.
Some of our elementaries as well, yeah. It looks different in elementary, but.
Correct, it does. But it's still a form of care and a data point to be able to identify students' needs. How stewards, it's a leadership class, identify needs. SOC leadership class, identify needs. SOC Leadership Class, identify needs. G-Term, identify needs. We just finished our G-Term. We were able to identify a lot of student needs through our G-Term. Operation Prep, Operation Purple Cow, which people have already touched on, mock interview system, where we set these kids up for their future story. All these ways help us identify how we can help students to be successful. We do this through the data we collect. So when you think about the process, I think culturally, one of the reasons why both high schools are in the top 12 in the state of Kentucky is because we do data that allows us to identify needs of our students. And when we do that, you can have relationships with students, you serve those students in a way that is unlike a lot of other systems that could be used. During all that, I think our culture here at Thomas Nelson is phenomenal. Part of this data shows that. I'm proud to be a part of the Thomas Nelson team. I'm proud to be a part of this district. So I'll finish with this. Have any of you all ever done a PBE visit? Just curious. Has anybody ever been on a site visit?
Just one.
You have? They're pretty cool, right? I mean, did you have a good experience with it? Have you all ever, have you done one? They're a pretty cool experience, like, so we go out on these visits, like Ms. Conley was talking about, right? And we get the opportunity to see these kids at work, right? This is one of the best experiences that I have here at Thomas Nelson. You want to talk about culture building? Walk into somebody's workplace and say, "I'm here to see this student do their job." And these students are like, "Oh, my gosh, they're here to see me." And they get so excited about that. That's relationship building. That's why this data matters. I would like to extend an invitation to you all. Anybody that wants to have a site visit, we're actually doing our leader site visits for Thomas Nelson on Thursday. Every leader in our building is going out to see our students after school in their workplace. Pretty cool experience. I would like to extend an invitation to you all. If you all would like to jump in Thursday, shoot me an email, I'll get you the details. They're a wicked cool experience. Or just anytime. Shoot me an email, shoot Kurt an email, and we'll get it done. It's a pretty cool experience. Thank y'all.
So you can also find this dashboard on the Thomas Nelson website, and every school's dashboard on our website. Thank you, guys.
Any questions for us?
No. No, I just want to give one more round of applause for the growth that we've seen in that first quarter.
Okay, moving on, we have the guest comments section. Thank you for attending our Nelson County School Board meeting. Any person wishing to address the board may do so by following these rules. Individuals representing themselves are limited to three minutes. Individuals represented in a group are limited to five. So you'll set forth, state your name and address and the group you're representing. And just as a reminder, public criticism of individual staff members or board members is prohibited, since no individual board member may act on behalf of the board. Concerns about the board's actions should be directed to the board as a whole. So Superintendent Bradley sent me the list, and it looks like first on the list is Jessica Hoog.
Jessica Hoog, speaking for NC Forward. The lack of integrity that sits on the majority of this board should open the eyes of every parent, community partner, and taxpayer in this county. We at NC Forward have watched the circus the past year as corruption, political agendas, and personal vendettas have been put in front of doing what is best for every student in this school district. This isn't a matter of trying to argue who won in an election. I guess you could say we respect the process. However, the truth was not told to the voters back in 2022. No one said the end goal was to close Thomas Nelson or bring middle schoolers from New Haven and Boston to OKH, essentially eliminating school choice for New Haven, Boston, and Cox's Creek communities. None of that was mentioned. It was all taxes will increase, and we can't afford a community campus plan. But once those plans were stalled and $2 million of taxpayers' dollars were wasted, it was no issue at all for three members to vote yes to move forward on an $85 million plan at one location, except that they didn't read the fine print, nor have they had the proper training on how facility planning in school districts worked. So then, with very little discussion and ignoring all input from principals, they voted to move the middle schoolers of New Haven and Boston to OKH, starting in August of 2024. Please note, we understand that New Haven and Boston middle schoolers had to be moved. However, there were so many much, so many more better options presented than shoving all these kids into OKH, putting the school near capacity. There are so many unanswered questions, so many logistics to figure out, and if you think, and if you ask any of the ones that voted yes to it, they'll direct you to the experts they chose to ignore in the first place, our administrators and educators, because they're the ones that have to figure it out. Those that voted yes to this didn't even have the decency to discuss this move with any of the staff that the schools are impacted by. I'm gonna use a quote that Mr. Kyle Boblet used back in April of 2023 during his guest comments. "When someone tells you who they are, believe them. To the communities of New Haven, Boston, Cox's Creek, and Woodlawn, they've told you who they are, so believe them." And please remember this, as the year progresses, that we have three seats up for reelection in November. Three seats could be the way to start fixing this disaster if they are occupied by people with morals and character. But it's gonna take more than just a few. It will take all of those communities that these board members have chosen to ignore and put their political agendas in front of to ensure we get the right people in those seats. I've talked to so many and heard so many frustrations. What can we do? That's the question that constantly comes up. NC Forward has filed a lawsuit, it's no secret, against the school board, because we saw wrong being done, and we wanted to fight and advocate for what is right, since voices of all stakeholders have essentially been ignored by the board. So there will be a hearing this Friday, February 16th, at 11:00 a.m. The judge will be here in Nelson County at the Judicial Center, and we strongly encourage the communities to show up and show your support for holding these board accountable. Thank you.
Okay, next on the list, we have Toby Lewis. Toby Lewis? Okay. If he's not here. Next on the list, we have Damon Jackie. Mr. Jackie? Okay. Next on the list, we have Deborah Boachewski. She messaged me, she is not gonna be here, so... She messaged for me to take her name off the list. The next on the list is Melissa Parrish.
Jeff and Melissa Parrish, New Haven, Kentucky. We represent this group of concerned parents and students. We have all watched the total lack of leadership from our board the last year. We have texted, called, and emailed our elected board members. We've participated in community meetings, town hall meetings, and continue to advocate for our children. The students all you board members should be concerned about have walked out of school in protest of your decisions. Your teachers and administrators have spoken out in these meetings, protested your careless decisions, and presented thought-out plans on middle school options. Twice, actually. Your superintendent has weathered the storm of you pushing him out while staying focused somehow on educating and getting the best out of his staff. What led to parents of over 500 students to keep their kids out of school this week to protest your mandates, you may ask? This board cannot be trusted. The board's other concern about money, as you've heard earlier, they voted the community campus plan down and wasted $2 million of our dollars. Shortly thereafter, voted to get bids to spend $80 to $90 million more. Why are these so contradictory, you might ask? Because this board cannot be trusted. The board approved New Haven's renovation as a P-5 with no communication on middle school at all. While I believe they have a plan, I also am confident it is in the dark. Leaders communicate their vision and plan. You are not all leaders, and you cannot be trusted. In December, the principals from all new at Nelson County schools shared different options for Boston-New Haven middle school transition. They were supposed to be discussed in the January board meeting. During the board's rejection of all three plans, a magical paper popped out of the board's purse with their own plan. Send everyone to OKH. Superintendent Bradley offered a board lifeline, saying, "Why don't you let the parents decide which option is best? You voted to silence our voice and remove our choice." For this, this board cannot be trusted. This last vote has been reflected on daily since you shoved this plan down the throat of our communities, and three things remain top of mind. Number one, the two communities with the heaviest impact from this decision, New Haven and Boston, both have their board member vote no to the plan that arose from a purse. That will make a logical person go insane. Number two, did anyone ask OKH's principal what she thought? No. Number three, everyone has had a jerk boss who mandates things without reasoning just because they have power. I get that from a business perspective. If we don't like it, we can quit. Allow me to point out an important fact. We do not work for you. We demand a voice. We demand a seat at the table advocating for our students. We demand you actually show up for real conversations your communities are having. We demand a choice. The board wrote an email to KED and other local officials in January outlining multiple false claims. Four words in that letter stand out. Please respect the process. You cannot buy respect. You cannot be gifted respect. You cannot take respect. It must be earned. Has this board shown respect to our staff, teachers, principals, superintendent, parents, or students? No. The most important thing we want to discuss tonight is a solution. We're not here just to complain. We want a solution for the chaotic mess this board has created over the last 13 months. The solution to the middle school situation seems obvious and fair. Let parents decide. We should not be forced to agree with one idea. We all have a brain and can decide for our own child what is best for them. Is diversity not still allowed in America? If you want to send your child to OKH, God bless you. If you want to send your child to Thomas Nelson, do it. If you want to send your child to one of our Catholic schools, great. If you're tired of public school and want to homeschool your child, fantastic. If you're interested in polishing the biggest sports trophy in the world, cool. Parents should be able to think different from one another. Children should be able to learn in the best environment for them. School employees should have the resource they need in all schools. If the board has any concerns about ensuring each parent is reached to get a vote, let us help you do that. We will go door to door. Our ask is that you vote to allow parents to decide what middle school option is best for them tonight. Take action and be a leader tonight. If you still stand behind your vote to silence our vote in January, resign tonight.
Hello, I'm Melissa Mattingly, and I'm an individual. As a mother who has not only had biological children, but also has fostered many children and recently adopted, I firmly believe that removing parent choice for schools, especially with the recent ability to do so, causes one to question the motives behind such decisions. Knowing students by name and building support systems far outweighs the desire to have parent support teams. Families have trusted educators every day with their children, and sometimes even to support families in establishing safe homes. Yet we are now removing educators and administrators from making decisions about our students' future. Instead, we hide behind small percentages of voters and claim it is what the majority wants. We've kept our kids home to show you numbers, and that parents are where education begins. Parents have rights to determine the benefits schools provide. Having a larger student body for our middle schools means a higher chance of our students becoming lost. With a high number of foster children and children with trauma already being behind, that means those children have a higher chance of them not being able to catch up because of that larger student body. Relationship building will be harder to be made with these children and their families, many of whom who need faculty and caregivers to support each other to make the best decisions for them educationally and behaviorally sometimes. And it will help them to succeed, and combining those middle schools will hinder that because of the sheer number of students in one building. Most of the children I have raised in my home have played sports, and it's really fun to win. But sports to me means responsibility, respect, learning how to be a team. And many of our kids won't be able to play sports anymore if we combine all these middle schools. They won't get the chance to have those skills learned. Thank you.
I don't know how I'm gonna follow both of those. My name is Erin Hutchins. I am speaking on behalf of several parents of Nelson County children. I'm not here to fight. I think that we can all talk. Like civil people, we can agree to disagree. I'm simply here to ask that as a parent, we have a choice in our children's future. We brought them to your schools because we trusted the people that lead these schools, the teachers. We trust you all. We trust you with our most prized positions, our children. And we trust that you would make the best decisions for them. That's why we voted you all in the spots that you're in, but somehow that's been lost. There hasn't been transparency, and I understand that a lot of things have not been transparent because parents are very emotional about this, because it's our children. And so they come off mad and angry, and that, I think, is the reason that there's not a lot of transparency from the board. But if there were more transparency, we wouldn't be as angry. Again, I can agree to disagree. I'm not here to be hateful or mean. I wrote a very... I'm sorry. I wrote a petition. It was turned in. I did post it on social media. It was reported to Facebook as being abusive. I did not mean to be abusive. I wasn't trying to be abusive. I was simply trying to state that the parents would like to have a choice in their children's future. future. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Kurt Merrifield.
I'm just speaking for myself. So, good evening. I know that through the data dashboard, our team got to speak to the board. Really, my conversation today is to the educators and the parents in the room, so if you'll give me just that time. So I wanted to speak just over the past two years on how this dialogue has helped reaffirm what I and many of the other educators within the district have known for quite some time. That the past two years, we've reaffirmed the importance of relationships and that we are truly a community of abundance and that continues to be paramount in the future we must create for our students. Just today, in my mid-year coaching conversation with a teacher, I asked, "Where do you find purpose and meaning in your work?" The theme was consistent through all my conversations, but this one stuck out to me. When I asked the question, the leader said, "This work is fulfilling because I'm pouring into the lives of students each day. When they lose a friend or a loved one, when they don't know how to handle a difficult situation in life. In the long run, it's the connections that matter more than anything we do as teachers." The importance of culture, belonging, and service is vital to the learning in our buildings because focusing on humanity only enhances our outcomes. If students know you care, they will care. And in the past two years, it's also helped reaffirm that our students' worth cannot be condensed into line items on a spreadsheet. They have helped us understand more deeply that when we say our students are more than a test score, it is more than a slogan. It's the truth. Our students' lives, their needs, their struggles, and their contributions to our community cannot be condensed to two-dimensional colors, rankings, or measurements by the state. I mean, our school alone, over just in the past two years, has been low and very high. But this has never affected our long-term mission of doing right by students, finding purpose in the work that we do, and ensuring that we set students up for future story success. And I believe with all my heart that can be said for every other educator and every other building in this county. It is always about the process. It's never about the product. The work that each of you do, each educator in this county does, day in and day out, is changing lives. You do have an impact. By doing what is best for every student every day, you act as a much-needed advocate for our kids because we know not every kid has one. Thank you to all of the educators for your persistence because in the end, it is the right and ethical thing to do. Thank you.
Next on the list is Jeff Parish. Oh, crap, sorry. I don't know how that... Okay, and then I have Diane Breedy. Oh, sorry. Did you... No, go ahead. That's fine.
Sorry, we switched places.
That's fine.
No worries. And I'm speaking on behalf of a group of New Haven parents. To paraphrase the very vocal gentleman from last meeting, "Just get out of the way, people, and let the board do their job." That should make the hairs on the back of your neck stand up like someone saying, "Just let the government do their job and take care of you. Surely, they have your best interests at heart. No need to pay attention here." To the very vocal gentleman that advises our board apparently, we, the big group that you saw come up here and that are attending tonight, we are the useful idiots, as you called us. We've all been paying attention. We are not all here because we have so much time on our hands or because we think this is fun. We have written emails with no response, held town halls, and attended and spoken at board meetings, as is our freedom to do so, and you have not shown up. Boards are supposed to be a voice for the people they represent. Well, you all have not been a voice for us. You have your own agenda and it has cost us time and money and heartache. We have now seen a longtime board member resign citing that he could no longer go along with the unethical board. A very well-respected attorney in Kentucky do the same, and now the OKH principal has resigned as well. This in itself should be enough to make you sit up and pay attention. After you stopped the two-year plan for community campus, principals together got together for months to try to come up with the best compromise of what to do with middle school students. You all did not even give these educators' work and plans a thorough discussion or pros and cons in public. You didn't even entertain it. Take option number three that was presented. This would be a compromise that actually solved problems at hand. This would keep preschool through sixth graders at their prospective homeschools and in their communities. Seventh and eighth graders would have their own wing at their prospective high schools. Most kids that are going to play sports in high school start playing up for their prospective school, seventh grade and up. So it makes sense for the transition to be at this time. It only makes sense for New Haven and Boston students, if they are to be moved, that you move them on their prospective high school campus. They could be making connections with their teachers and coaches and also have access to higher-level classes and different activities. Instead, you have added an additional transition in the hardest, most awkward time of childhood. With the middle school option three, there would only be one transition in the seventh grade. What you voted for last month gives every family additional hardship and more complicated logistics by forcing two transitions for each child and a family instead of one. Why would you go against every principal in the county, having been united what they were united and advocating for? If you had the benefit of having teachers at Thomas Nelson be willing to meet any morning at 7:30 to help your kid struggling in algebra, or heard the teachers there talk about how passionate they are about getting kids that hate school into something that lights them up, finding them a trade and getting them to graduate, or had your kid light up at the dinner table about her first AP class she was able to take, or maybe had to be at any of the funerals here at Thomas Nelson these last few years? If you had been there and spent time there and they were your children, you would want them at Thomas Nelson as soon as possible. If it were your own children, you wouldn't be taking away the eighth-grade year of a seventh-grader child that they expected to have this next year. And you wouldn't be sending your kids an hour round trip to one destination at a middle school at near capacity with no room for growth, away from the coaches they are already playing for and away from their siblings. If it were your own children, you would not have voted to take... to look at spending $85 to $95 million for one high school campus instead of allowing two healthy, thriving rival campuses with their own great cultures to exist with room for growth, while ignoring the fact that graduation rates are significantly higher with two high schools versus one. Please, give Boston and New Haven Middle School students a choice to go to Thomas Nelson campus. This gives all students the greatest chance and makes the most sense. Change is hard enough. We want the very best change for our kids. If there are parents that still want to send their kid to OKH, they can have that choice too. Having middle school and even elementary in some areas of the state on the same campus in high school is not some radical crazy thing. There are examples of this all over the Commonwealth, of this working, and it has many advantages. What you as a board member are comfortable with, your own personal feelings, should not be a deciding factor. You instead should be listening to the research and the people that are actually working with students. The last thing overlooked in January meeting, where you wouldn't even consider any of the suggested options from the county's principals, was cost. The number three option, initial investment, would be $0. You board members who are so fiscally minded should appreciate that, I know. Thank you, Tracy Bowing, for being so brave and continuing to be the only steady, calm voice of reason advocating for the children of New Haven and Boston. It's not an easy thing to do to stand up for what is right, go in a different direction and be set apart. Be brave enough to listen and make choices that are best for all students. You all could, and if it was easy, more of you would be doing it. So will you? Will you have the conscience and the courage to discuss the plan for middle school students publicly right here, civilly and articulately, and discuss the pros and cons? Will you answer why you refuse to hear what parents want? Will you tell us why you think you know better than the teachers, administrators, and parents that actually work with these kids every single day? Do you think we do not want what is best for them?
Over the last week, on the Nelson County Forward Facebook page, the admins have been posting a couple of posts exposing some of the unethical behaviors coming from certain board members on this board, and I'm very thankful for that. I do believe the exposure is also making its way to the standard, and I hope other news outlets as well. The exposure of this unethical behavior clearly spelling out who the ringleader is, and I use the term leader very loosely because she is no leader by my definition. I think the more exposure to your whatever, it is my hope that KDE will finally come in and somehow be able to disband this current board, and I'm continuing to advocate any way I can to see that happen. So I'm going to take you all to church for a minute. There is a candidate running for Indiana's governor's race, and in his commercial, he uses a verse from the Bible, and he says, "Where there is no vision, the people will perish." It's Proverbs 29, verse 18. I was so intrigued by this when I heard it, and I'm like, "This is our current school board. This is the destruction of the district." And I started looking it up in its context for which the statement, mind you, has been used. Some have used this verse to emphasize the importance of vision with leadership, something this current board lacks. Another part of that verse says, "Blessed is the one who heeds wisdom's instruction." Again, I was like, "This is our current school board." I don't know, but it is my hope that you are starting to see the relevance of this and where I'm going with it, but I'm doubtful. So allow me to dumb it down for you, big bird style, and maybe you will understand. In other words, pay attention to the ones who know what they're talking about, and when you're told something is a bad idea, you can bank on it that it's a bad idea. I've had a conversation with people from other districts in my day-to-day world, and a common question I am asked is, "Nelson County has one of the best superintendents in the state. Why is your board wanting to get rid of them?" My response? Well, they are a bunch of, and I'm going to say XXXX because we have children in the room. So when you all go... So when you all go to KSBA next month and people are staring at you, you'll know why. With regard to your decision to cram 650 middle school kids into one building, my first concern is for the kids on a safety level. I pray to God that nothing ever happens to that school where you would have to evacuate 650 panicky kids, and God forbid if something were to happen in that process. If it does, I blame you. You were at fault. My next concern is how you plan to feed all of these kids. No way all of them will fit into the cafeteria, which means you have to stagger your lunches, which means first lunch will be at what, 10 o'clock? Have you considered the kids with food insecurities and the fact that they may come in and eat breakfast at 7:30, not sure what time that happens, but then turn around and eat at 10 a.m.? That might be their last meal of the day at 10 a.m. So when you are sitting down at your table eating your steak and potatoes, somewhere is a kiddo who you made a bad decision for who was sitting hungry because of it. Great job, Nelson County School Board. And thank you, Tracy, for everything you're doing. You are a true hero.
Okay.
I have something.
Okay.
Okay. Last month, I was reminded by a previous board member that I owed Jeremy Hill an apology for something that I said last December. I spoke to Jeremy right afterwards. He and I had a very private talk. There was more to the issue than just what I said. So for that, I am making a public apology to Jeremy Hill. So, and that's all that needs to be said. So, thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
You're welcome.
Okay. Moving on to item five, the consent agenda. We've got the monthly financial report, leaves of absence, minutes from the previous meeting, fundraiser requests, donations, and overnight out-of-state field trip requests. Is there anything anybody wants to dig into? Or we have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I make a motion to accept our agenda items A through F.
Okay, I have a motion to accept. Do I have a second? Okay, a second for Ms. Milburn. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. No opposed? All right, we will move on. Item number six. Well, we actually... Well, let me... First of all, this is... The public comment section is over, but I will explain. We're doing this the way that we... The way that Diane set this up before. We will allow 30 minutes of comment. I add up the speakers, and we actually... There was 32 minutes of commentary. So we did go through that. There was actually only one other person on the list at the door. So, the list was a Google list that I got from Superintendent Bradley when we walked in. So, moving on to item number six, personnel notifications.
This is information only, no action required.
Okay. All right. And then moving on, item 6B, we have grant acceptance, Ms. Sheerhorn.
Money, money, money. Good evening. Usually, I'm pretty quick, but today we have several, so good news there. The first thing that I wanted to ask for was permission to accept the grant that we were awarded for the Math Achievement Fund in the amount of $40,000 for both Bloomfield Elementary and Cox's Creek Elementary. It is a one-year grant period from August 1st to September 30th, 2025.
Great. That's wonderful. Amazing.
Just them all. Okay. The next one, we were awarded that diesel fuel reduction grant in the amount of $125,000 for the purchase of one bus. That grant period is from August 1st to September 30th of 2025. And then our last grant that we were awarded from previous months is the CEP-KAA grant, and that was in the amount of $2,000. And that grant will support the purchase of promotional materials and family events geared toward advertising the associate's degree opportunities in the Nelson County schools. And I just wanted to note that we were one of only 17 districts to be awarded that.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Sheerhorn. Do you have a motion to approve the following grant awards?
I'll make a motion.
All right. Ms. Milburn made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Thank you.
And then I'm here to ask for permission to apply for several other grants in the coming month. The first one we would like to apply for is a reading diagnostic grant in the amount of $40,000, and it's to support the purchase of reading materials for the modification of instruction for Tier 2 and Tier 3. And that will also help to pay for PD time for teachers and subs for that experience as well.
Okay.
The next grant that we would like to apply for is from NEA, and that is the Learning and Leadership Grant in the amount of $2,500 to send one of our district's media library specialists to a high-quality professional development experience through ISTI in the summer of 2024.
Great.
The next grant that we would like to apply for is the... The next grant that we would like to apply for is the Preschool Partnership Grant, and that is through KDE, and that is for $300,000 over the course of three years, and it is to support full-day, year-round, quality, early childhood services for 3- and 4-year-olds in our district. And the last grant we would ask permission to apply for is for the frisks centers across our county, and we would be applying for $100,000 per center to meet the needs of the children and the families that they serve in each center as a means to enhance academic success.
Gotcha. There's some good things out there to apply for. So do I have a motion to approve the submission following, the following grant applications that have been described? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Ms. Foley made a motion, second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Milburn, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Can I catch you after the meeting, there's some time-sensitive things that I need you to sign?
Will do, absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good job. Thank you.
Okay. Next is the New Year bid packets with Jessica Rogers.
More money. Money, money, money.
I'm here tonight just to ask you if we can open up the bids for our normal things each year. We need to advertise for lawn services, pest control, paving, just the same as usual, but we need permission to advertise that we would like to accept bids for these services.
Okay, and this is something we do every year, every year?
Pretty easy.
Okay, so it looks like the recommended motion is to approve the advertising of bids for 2024, '25 school year for pest control, paving, and lawn care. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much.
Jessica.
All right, and the next item is 6E, the Fiscal Year 23 Financial Audit. Patrick and Associates?
Yes.
Welcome back.
Hello, ladies.
Hi.
Good evening. My name is Tammy Patrick, and this is Beth Francis, and we're the partners of Patrick and Associates, and we are here tonight to present the Fiscal Year 2023 Financial Statement Audit Report. I think each of you all have received a copy of that already. We completed the audit in early November, issued it on November 15th, submitted to KDE, and as far as we know right now, we've passed all their hoops and thresholds that they require us to go through, so it's a kind of a rigorous process that we go through. Jessica and Superintendent Bradley really work hard with us, and their staff there at the board, making sure that they are ready for the audit each year. We're glad to say that this year, we again are going to issue an unmodified opinion.
Just got to lift it up.
I thought I was talking about...
There you go.
The audit report for fiscal year 2023, we have issued an unmodified opinion. We did not notice any issues in regard to the preparation of the financial statements, the notes to the financial statements, the disclosures there. We noted no issues in regard to issues in compliance with state laws, things of that nature, and also in regard to the federal, major federal programs that were federal grants during the fiscal year, and student activity funds. So, no issues were noted. It's a really good, clean audit. Like I said, it goes back to the work of the board and the administration there at the office and the board office in being prepared. Are there any questions? We want to, also want to just say the cooperation when we're conducting the audit is key in the success of the audit, so.
No issues is what you want to hear with an audit, so.
So this is, this is an annual item mandated through the Department of Education. You guys go through a rigorous process of training, and I know you guys have tons of experience, just want to give the community some awareness. You guys spend weeks going through some of these processes.
Yes.
About how many hours total you guys spend on a district our size?
I would say about 150, 160 hours, I would say. We start in early July usually, when the financial statements are finalized, when Jessica gets those done, and then we start doing planning, and so it's just, it's a several months' process to get all of it together and get it reviewed and out the door.
Got it.
Just curious, how many, how many districts do you all do this for?
This year, we did 11, I think. We're going to probably do 12 or 13 this year. Beth and I come from a very large background in governmental auditing. We both worked for the State Auditor's Office for the majority of our career, where we both did local government audits, and we specialized in those as well as not-for-profit work. And then, my last seven years there, I was the manager of quality assurance, where I also worked on the KDE desk reviews, where we reviewed all 180 school districts throughout the state. So each year, I pretty much was the leader in that review process and making sure that all the audit reports were issued in regard, in accordance with standards as required. So, that would be kind of where, and then Beth was manager over central branch of about 30 to 40 counties. Yeah. Nelson County, just support. She worked here doing that. So we do, we do work from Ballard County to Pike, Pike County, Lawrence County? So yes, we're kind of across the state.
And the cost this year for Nelson County was?
For, for the audit?
I want to say 22, 25? 25? Yes.
It's a little higher than that. Yeah, I think it's, I think it was a little over $25,000.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
So also, I just want to acknowledge that really the success of the audit comes from the finance team. If every educator in Nelson County knows, and every principal out there that's listening, when people say, "No, you can't do that," that's also how we get here. So kudos to Jessica and the team for continued to instill the values of discipline and stewardship in the process.
And I'll say kudos to the, we do look at the student activity funds as well at each individual school, so kudos to those bookkeepers, because in all honesty, sometimes that is the hardest place to do bookkeeping, because you have money coming in from students and donations and field trips and ticket sales and inventory for concessions, and it takes a lot of time to do those, and they do a really good job as well. So sometimes that gets overlooked. That's a, that's a, probably that's our highest risk area, honestly.
Absolutely.
There's such good controls already in place, our KDE requirements and different things that have to be followed. So, you know, we look at it all. We look at everything from student activity funds to the high-level board money, so everybody did a great job and have really good records, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No action is going to be taken. This is informational only, so thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jessica. Great job.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is Senate Bill 9, Read to Succeed. We have Hope Darty presenting.
So we have two items we would like to talk to you about tonight. One is Senate Bill 9, and one is growth report from quarter two. So we'll start just real quick. Senate Bill 9 is also named the Read to Succeed Act. That is something that was passed in 2022. It's basically an initiative to help with early literacy across the state. And so, the goal of Senate Bill 9 is that all students are reading on proficient level by the close of third grade. So I know you've heard me talk about that a little bit before when we presented data. So that is Senate Bill 9. You'll be hearing about that. The Kentucky Department of Education is working on a group of people that's called the Early Literacy Department, and they have several people, but we'll get into that in just a minute after our growth report. I'm going to let Ms. Courtney Newton start with high school.
So we're going to start with high school, then go to middle school and elementary. This is from our quarter-two community assessments, and you'll also see some ACT growth from '21 to '23. So we're really excited from the growth that we saw from quarter one to quarter two, and those assessments were taken December and January at the middle school and high school level. So we saw significant growth across the board, every subject, every grade. We saw lots of growth. It doesn't happen by accident. That happens by very intentional conversations from our teachers, very intentional instructional decisions, lots of hard work from our students, our principals, and our teachers really talking about the needs of our students, and those are things that you heard about earlier in the board meeting. So you can see lots of big growth, big gains from quarter one to quarter two with community assessments. That's high school. And then, looking at middle school, you can see again, growth across the board, every subject area, every grade, writing. You can see content-specific, and then you can see our iReady growth as well, growth in both reading and math, every grade level, both of those areas as well. So we're really proud of the growth that we're seeing. We're really proud of the hard work that's happening in our buildings, and we know that that's going to continue as we go into March and April. It's another big assessment kind of month for us. We've got ACT coming up. We've got PACT 8-9 coming up. So we know that this growth is going to continue on as we move on into spring. So moving on into elementary, we've got Mr. Darty.
So same thing, we're really proud to present that we have growth across the board. I did break down early literacy by itself, just because we're taking too soon at Bill 9, the Read to Succeed Act. That's going to be a big factor in growing our reading and math across the board. So we have growth in all areas, so you can kind of see how that corresponds to each other with iReady and the community assessment data. As we've said before, we kind of look at three things, the KSA, our community assessment data, iReady. Those all help us to determine how we're doing in the classroom and for teachers to make decisions moving forward. So Senate Bill 9, or Read to Succeed Act. It's got quite a few parts. I'm going to just go over them briefly. So one big thing, some things that you'll see us do is, one, is implement a comprehensive reading program for grades paid through three. We're doing grades paid through five, so that's called EL. That's the program that we'll be using for comprehension across the district beginning next year. Two of our schools are already implementing that now with our other schools piloting modules. They're getting trained on that, so that'll be fully implemented next year, and we will grow from that as we learn about that and we start getting into it and kind of make it our own. Then also, after, that's got to be done by July 1st, so we've already adopted that, so we've checked that off. There's like some check boxes. Another is that we give a screener, so our screener is iReady, so we give that three times a year, so we were already doing that. The next part after that is if a student doesn't perform on benchmark on that first screener on iReady, then you have to have an additional assessment that you give every student who doesn't meet benchmark that tells you what they need to work on. So we did use that one this year. It was called Lit Task. It went with iReady. We didn't love it because it didn't give us the data we wanted, so we're currently reviewing other ones, myself and the literacy specialist, the GoRead leaders. We've met with several different companies. KD actually put out a list of approves. There's only about nine options, so we're just kind of going through those and picking what will that additional screener be. Once we give the additional one, there will be a student support plan written, which we already do, but it'll just be an enhanced version. So basically, it'll be, I'm working with this student, this person's, working with them this many times per day, or whatever time, their, the length, this is their goal, and that'll be written out and monitored. Once that's finished, the big part of this is the partnership with parents. So then, parents will be brought in to support that plan with what's called a Read at Home Plan. So basically, once we have that data, we'll say, oh, this student needs to work on phonics, that's their goal. We will write a Read at Home Plan with the parent, and then we will give them support to help at home and let them know what they can do to support, so we're a partnership. Other than that, the part of this is KDE received money from the state legislator because of the Senate Bill 9, so they developed this early literacy team. So they have a director, assistant director, five regional directors, and then 25 coaches. So our region, I think we share with CKC and the southeastern region, has a director, and then we have some coaches within that. I was fortunate that one of the coaches that was hired worked with me previously in a different role, so I've been in really close contact with her already to build that partnership, just to say, this is our plan, this is what we're doing. Are we doing the right things? Do we need to do anything different? And she, we met with the literacy specialist and her and one of her colleagues two weeks ago virtually, and she said, "You guys are doing more than any district in the region, just making sure that you're doing the things that need to be done aligned to Senate Bill 9." So again, we're not where we want to be. Our achievement's not where it needs to be, but as you've seen with the results, we're getting growth. We're getting there, but it's going to take some time, starting with our kindergarten, getting them on the right track, and growing from there each year. So any questions about the Read to Succeed? I'll try to answer.
I don't have a question. I want everybody to know out here, this is what needs to be clapped. This is what needs your attention, is what's going on in a classroom at this point, at this point, at this point! This is what needs to be going on in the classroom. So I thank you very much.
Yes, our teachers have really been working hard on this. They've been learning the professional development. They've really been doing all the right things. They've been doing a wonderful job with that.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, we have had a public comment section. If you continue to talk out, I'm going to have to ask you to leave. Thank you for this presentation. Looks like y'all are doing great things. It really is.
Thank you all very much.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Good deal, we've got Alex Martin, SBDM Tentative allocations.
So this conversation really is about the tentative allocations that we have, and essentially what that means is, is the staffing resources that are provided inside our schools. I do want to preface it to say that there are lots of staff inside of our schools, and those folks get paid out of lots of different pots of money. So when I talk about these things and the numbers that you may see on the screen, these are not all of the staff members in our building. Directly, this conversation's going to reference Sections 4, 5, and 6. That's what we're going to talk about today. So just want to quickly review our timeline and kind of where we're at in this conversation. Currently, we're still tracking enrollments in Infiniti Campus with students. Obviously, tonight, the tentative allocations. We also have staffing strategic set up with principals, really looking at their staff and thinking about what makes sense and supports they need inside their building. Online registration's coming up for families. Our elementaries are hosting pre-K and K open house events, and then in April, that's when we'll be in a much better spot to really look at our final allocations, and I'll come before you guys then to ask for approval for those. So some key conversations really stand out when we think about staffing inside our buildings. One priority that we want to work to establish is that at our elementary level, work to reduce those class sizes in those spaces. So for instance, previous allocation ratios were 25 to 1, meaning for every 25 students, you would get a teacher. We're looking to reduce that to 23 to 1, and really what that means is that our elementary schools would gain another teacher or two, depending on the size of that building. As a district, that looks like a $400,000 investment. Currently, the high school and middle school ratio allocations, we're recommending keeping those the same at this time. And then, Section 6, which is essentially a pot of funds for schools to use, the recommendation for that is $100 a student. That remains the same, classified, Section 5, looking to remain the same. And then, at the same time, obviously, our movement of our students from New Haven and Boston to the OKH campus, really just trying to evaluate again what resources might that building needs so that they're going to be successful. And like I mentioned before, these allocations do not include, for instance, like diverse learning or Section 7. So this is currently where we are. There are very tentative allocations are essentially predicated upon student projected enrollments. So just, oh, Section 4, Section 5, and Section 6. So any, that's where we're at in that process, and we plan on having lots of conversations and be ready for April.
Thank you. I like the ratio. That's, I think that's a great move to make these class sizes smaller, especially with the initiative. Any other questions? Any other questions? Okay.
One thing I would ask, just for, because I don't think, I want to make sure everybody understands.
I can't hear you.
Can you give us an idea of what the middle school and high school ratio is as well?
So currently, you see in that Section 4, which Tracy's referencing, at the 6th to 8th grade level, the ratio's 30 to 1, and the 9th through 12th grade ratio is 26 to 1. That's a little bit misleading in that the, the middle schools typically also receive a Section 7, so that would decrease the ratio per se. And the high schools, they get allocations such as ATC or even our workforce, our PPE experiences. That's kind of an allocation. It's not necessarily accounted for. That's why those ratios are a little different.
So for example, currently at Okentucky Home, the additional teachers are at 7 and beyond the Section 4.
Expected for next year.
Right. So we use that as an example to say, 30 So we use that as an example to say, 30 to 1 is the ratio that is predicted, we're allocating an additional 7 teachers to the building based on Section 7, that also allows teachers to have planning time and other pieces and parts.
Thank you.
So we do need to approve a tentative allocation.
Okay.
This is, again, tentative, April would be the final, it could always, in theory, be modified, these are all part of the regulatory process to ensure we're being thoughtful in the planning and staffing.
Okay, and so that would be based on Mr. Martin's presentation, so is there a motion to approve the 24, 25 tentative SBDM allocations as presented?
I'd make a motion on that, I love that.
Okay, Mr. Norman made a motion.
I'll second.
All right, Ms. Milburn's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes. Okay. Okay, this is Section 6H, we had added to the agenda to review board council applications, we had done an RFP, we had put that out to seek permanent counsel, and I had a conversation with Tracy about that today. I'd be inclined to, we didn't get a ton of applications, I'd be inclined to push that out and maybe table it so that we can look at getting a few more applications to review?
The only thing I do want to make clear too, is I think there was confusion, even on my part, in January, the board voted to contract with an interim attorney. Mr. Ferris resigned in December, but Mr. Ferris is still our board attorney until we replace him with the long time, because Mr. Thompson is just limited counsel, he is only dealing with something extremely limited. So Mr. Ferris does the day-to-day, he's still who we contact as board members when we have questions, I did not realize that until a few days after that January 3 meeting, I assumed that we were hiring an interim that was taking over for Mr. Ferris, so I want to be extremely clear, I know that's how it came across in that meeting, but Eric Ferris is still the board attorney, and Mr. Thompson is just strictly dealing with one specific item. So when we look at looking for this person, they need to be extremely well-versed, and that's why that we're going to continue that search.
Yes, and we received some good applications, we just, I would be inclined to keep it open, so I don't know if we need a motion, but I guess my motion would be just to table the matter this.
I was going to say, to table it for now, would probably be best.
So I make a motion to table, does anybody second?
Second.
Second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so moving on. All right, Section 7A, next strategic decision, or sorry, next strategic decision-making, we have the Nelson County High School and Thomas Nelson High School athletics release for bid, so Mr. Ward?
Thank you, we were asked, we were asked to help two projects, one at Thomas Nelson, one at Nelson County High School. The Nelson County High School one, the field there will be having a turf replacement, it's at the end of life, that's being handled by the school board under a state bid contract, so we don't have involvement with that, but the part that we are helping out with is the resurfacing of the track, there's no state bid contract available for that, so it did involve producing documents that can be released for bid, so those documents are ready, we would release them for bid over the course of this month and bring bids back to you next month. Similarly, Thomas Nelson would be doing a field conversion, also getting synthetic turf, for that one, we would need to do the preparation of the subgrade, so it's an earthwork project, again, it's not something that can be done under state bid contracts, so we would release it for bid and bring you bids next month.
Okay, so in order to move those projects along, do I have a motion to authorize release of the track resurfacing at Nelson County High School and the Thomas Nelson field prep for competitive bidding?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, thank you.
I'll start this one as Jim comes up. We did receive bids for the Up Center and the Bus Maintenance Facility on February 8, we received 45 total bids across 20 bid packages, unfortunately, there were seven bid packages that did not receive bids, so those automatically we would have to put back out for bid in order to get complete projects. The bid packages we did not receive for both projects, we received no masonry bids, no aluminum storefront and window bids, and no mechanical bids, and then for the bus maintenance facility, we received no painting bid, so those seven packages we would automatically need to reissue for bidding. Do you want me to keep going? Okay. There, we reviewed the bids we did receive, for different reasons, we are recommending some of those bid packages be rejected, for others, we are recommending that you authorize us, Codell and Studio Creamer, to go into negotiations with bidders to try to get clarity and a little, some economies in some of that work. The ones we're recommending for rejection are Bid Package 1, which is earthwork for the bus maintenance facility, Bid Package 5, which is steel for the bus maintenance facility, Bid Package 12, which is electrical for the bus maintenance facility, and Bid Package 17, which is roofing for the Up Center. The ones we're recommending for negotiation are Bid Packages 3 for the general trades for the bus maintenance facility, Bid Package 7, which is drywall and ceilings for the bus maintenance facility, that one was unique in that the bids were exactly the same, so we need to negotiate with those two bidders in order to get to something we can act on. Bid Package 14 is general trades for the Up Center, sorry, I already said that one, Bid Package 16 is steel for the Up Center, and Bid Package 19 is drywall and ceilings for the Up Center.
Okay.
So what, why are we seeing the need to rebid on some of these projects? Is there, I guess my concern, are, were we sort of a risk because of what occurred in '23?
Each package is really, as we've looked at it, is for different reasons, Bid Package 1, for instance, there were just irregularities in the bids that we received, enough irregularities across multiple bids that we felt it would be fairer to those bidders, that we rebid it and make sure we get consistent bids that have clear information. In each of these cases, what we're trying to do is avoid any of the questions that might have arisen in past projects and make sure that we're following rules and getting good, fair bidding.
But it's nothing to have a rebid either, I mean, people rebid, it's not uncommon to be rebidded.
Correct.
Thank you. I just want everybody to know, it's nothing uncommon for that to happen.
Okay.
And...
What you're not seeing in the list we presented, but it is on the letter, is that there are several, many of the bids that we didn't notice, take notice of here, that we are recommending just hold, you can't act on any of those until we have a full pair of projects, so those we're holding, we have 60 days to hold those bids.
That's what my next question was, 60, okay.
Okay.
What would cause us not to get a bid on a project?
So, back to the question on is this irregular, today's market, we're seeing a lot of having to rebid.
Oh, really?
More than normal, just because we're not getting the participation. Everybody's busy, I mean, it just is what it is, it's just, so, we need to give you a whole picture, and it's nearly impossible to give you a whole picture till we get these. Am I proud of the results? No, I'm not, but is it today's market? It is.
It is what it is.
It is what it is, I mean, like, pre-engineered building for the bus garage, we extended the bids twice, and they still, the vendors still didn't provide pricing, so our pre-engineered numbers are double where they should be. So it's our hope to come back to the March meeting, but that pre-engineered building's going, it's a drive, so mechanical, electrical's very labor-intensive, they're all busy. So, I mean, we had a lot of people bail on bid day, so it's just today's...
Today's market.
There's a lot of work out there right now, there's a lot of work out there right now with all those steelery buildings and stuff, it's just flooded.
There is, people, it's hard to get people, and it's just, we're kind of at their mercy.
Is this something you believe we can deal with at the next meeting in March?
Yes, ma'am, but don't be shocked if we don't ask for a special meeting or...
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Absolutely. I mean, there's, like, rocks even hard to get.
Correct, so, my thought was...
It is.
You could probably do this in one motion, you've got the bid packages for each, for competitive negotiation, rebid for no bids, rebid for bids over budget or irregularities, or no action.
Okay, so, you know, it would be a combination of rejecting and negotiating, so perhaps we could, can we make a motion to follow the advice of, as presented?
It's right there.
Is it in there? So, is it? Okay.
The board either rejects bids...
So, I guess the recommended motion would be the board either rejects or authorizes negotiation with certain bidders as recommended under the construction manager and design team.
Correct.
All right, that's the recommended motion, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Norman. Second, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you all very much.
I can kind of see it. All right, Item 7C, the Okentucky Home Middle Connected Campus Update.
Hi, everybody, so I just wanted to provide a little bit of context to how, since the decision was made last month, the steps that we have taken to support our teams in this process. So a couple of weeks ago, we united both, our teams from OKH, from New Haven and from Boston, together in a central location, not even at a school, but in, at a family farm in New Haven, Kentucky, so we were able to bring teams together to start conversations. We united around these priorities and just had a time of really fellowship and conversation to start building relationships, so that our teams will start connecting and, you know, with one another as we unite potentially in the future. So our teams have already started that process, and really, the energy was phenomenal that day, we have remarkable leaders that are ready to tackle any task and to support every single student, so that's priority number one, and then we also discussed these things, so celebrating our teachers and just their willingness to tackle anything for our kids. And then in addition to that, the HR team has come out to Boston as well as New Haven and is partnering with Mandy as well, to go and talk with each of the teachers and kind of think about where their best fit is, because it's a huge decision, thinking about where they live, and then where their kids go to school and stuff like that, and transitioning them to different places, and where works out best for them, and also all the different schools to figure out the best situations for our students and things, so they've been working with our teachers through HR. In addition to those things, administrators meet on a weekly basis to start beginning the conversation around timelines, and what that looks like for our students, our families, and the planning process from transition as 5th graders to 6th graders, but also encompassing our 7th grade students and what that transition looks like as well.
Lastly, we have some events planned, these will be at local schools to follow with events at Okentucky Home. Our first events are coming up with an event on February 22 at the New Haven School, February, I'm sorry, February 27 at the Boston School, and February 29 at OKH, those would be for individual school communities at their local schools, so we can give more detail into the timeline and into the priorities that we've laid out, and we'll begin potentially even discussing scheduling and scheduling opportunities. Any questions about the process we're going through?
I think I would like to hear the board sort of have some discussion about the decision itself, since we've had many people stand up here and kind of ask us questions, maybe it's time we actually respond. You know, there's no perfect decision that can be made in this situation, just given kind of the... Well, this is, this is, we have to be able to do business, and if we can't have a discussion here, civil discussion, then we can either ask you to leave or we can adjourn the meeting, but I think there's a lot to talk about, so I would hope that you all would honor and respect our ability to conduct business, okay? So, you know, there's no perfect scenarios here, all of them come with certain challenges, and, you know, geographically, financially, there's a lot of factors in play. You know, we have, in the two middle schools that we have in Okentucky Home and in Bloomfield, we have a combined capacity of 1,128, meaning like, we have room for that many students, and we absolutely do not have 1,128 middle schoolers. I hear concerns about space, but I do not foresee space being an issue, I really don't. If you look at the numbers of students that would be transitioning from Boston and New Haven, there's adequate space at Okentucky Home, so, you know, we've made the decision, and I understand concerns, but I believe that we're going to be able to successfully transition, I look forward to the opportunities, that adding students mean you're adding teachers, it means you're adding opportunity, and I look forward to what that looks like, so. This is, is our student resource officer here? Okay, this is, you have to allow us to talk, ma'am. You have to allow us to talk, and if you can't, you'll be asked to, we'll escort you out, okay? That's the way it has to be, I'm sorry, but that's the way it has to be. Well, second, guys, the, I think the thing that we've talked about before, and the reason why there's this sort of energy coming our direction, is...
Tracy, Tracy can't hear you.
We have not been present, we had a forum at Cox's Creek, New Haven, and Boston, directly after the decision was made, I was fortunate to go to two of those, and the parents that are here, and the parents that have voiced their concerns, they want us to be part of that dialogue, this dialogue here, we can have all day long, but they want us to have it with them, that is why there's this frustration when, when we don't engage, and I think that's the thing, if we're going to make decisions that impact our families and we're not going to have them at the table, you better be prepared for this every time. The whole point, the whole point of us having those forums was to sort of, for us to be there, listen to the concerns, because that decision was made, and listen to the people that showed up, and listen, and I couldn't give them answers, but I could definitely try to say, you know, it's something that I know the superintendent and the principals are working really hard at, but just being able to be present and let them give me all of their energy at that moment was helpful. We have to ignore... We have to acknowledge, that is necessary when we're making decisions that impact our families and our community. I don't think you all quite grasp the importance of that. I don't know if we would be as upset as a community, if we would have had, as you told me a few years ago, Tracy, we want a seat at the table. These forums give people that opportunity to dialogue with you, with Nicole, with Diane, with David, in a way that they can't do here. Like, I would love to be able to respond to every guest that came up here, and say, "Well, we hear you, we can't get you what you need, but we hear you, what you're saying." At what point are you all willing to have that dialogue? If it's, and again, I know it's not gonna be during this meeting, but are you all willing to have a Q&amp;A forum with the community?
I'm absolutely willing to do that. I do think, I'm absolutely willing to do that. Now, a lot of the questions are gonna be questions that are gonna have to be answered by administrators, with regard to capacity. I think some of the questions that have been raised are regarding capacity and whatnot. There's questions that we can't answer, as board members. However, I'm not unwilling to do that. I will say that I don't, I have conversations every day with community members related to this. However, the approach that a lot of people have taken, if you want an open dialogue, there has to be a mutual respect, and when, the way that a lot of this has been approached, I mean, it's, you can't be surprised when we don't respond to emails that are just pure venom. I mean, that's just human nature, it's just something you need to acknowledge. So, anyway, I am willing, yeah, I'm willing to do that. I think these meetings that we already have planned, at Boston and Okentucky Home, and I think those would be helpful, so...
Tracy, you might be the only one that gets halfway decent emails, because you're with them. You see what the, you, you know, you've been for it the whole time, and we haven't. And that's the reason why they come at us, particularly three of us, and you've come at us with no hard evidence of what we supposedly have already done. That's the reason why you get the better end of conversations that's going on. We don't, because the same crew shows up almost every meeting, and you hear the same comments, even though they get a little nastier every month. And that is the reason why it turns into a, he said, she said, they said, and it's mean. It's been mean and hateful.
So there...
And I've tried my best not to be hateful, but it's getting to the point now, where we, you just turn a deaf ear, because I don't wanna hear all the negativity. They haven't asked to be nice, just like what's going on now.
I don't think you understand...
Do you honestly think that we deserve this?
Community members?
Yes!
You need to clear the house, is what needs to be done.
All right, if I have to call you down again, I'm telling you, if I have to call you down again, we can adjourn this meeting, and I don't think anybody wants to do that, but we can adjourn the meeting. This is your last warning. If you cannot sit here, if you cannot sit here and listen, we will adjourn the meeting, okay?
Please be quiet.
I make a motion, we adjourn this meeting now, please.
Wait here a second. But that's not gonna solve the problem. Now, I understand...
We're sitting here talking, guys, and we can't even talk.
I understand.
It's sad, we can't even sit here and talk.
I've made the motion to adjourn the meeting.
I have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
We need a second, please.
I'll second.
Okay, go ahead.
I have a motion, sir? I have a motion.
You're not gonna listen to this stuff?
No.
Any people over, you're not... Tracy, this is not the way it should be.
All right, I have a motion and a second, to adjourn.
We have no...
Okay.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion adjourned.
Motion carries.
I'm not gonna sit here and listen to this crap. How rude, how rude are you want these people? Well, just doing a pretty damn good thing.